Yeah, we have to start all over.
No. Oh, that was a practice run. All right, I'm ready.
So beach services of 5,000 and marine patrol of 3 grand.
And remember, this is, all those numbers are on a beautiful, perfect summer. There isn't any rain and we have the beach open all hours. Probably not the real, realistic.
It's like Pleasantville. It doesn't rain here.
There you go.
How was our boathouse coming along?
I don't have the answer for you.
Actually, we found the plans in the last boathouse. So that will expedite our, our, our.
Miracle. Anything else you want to talk about?
One, yes, one last thing is a beach maintainer, the nice name for pooper scooper. And that is my understanding and the issues of goose poop that has been a constant headache. And so the idea is a minimum wage person, you know, $15, you know, an hour, one day, every day, an hour or two. Coming at, you know, 6:30 in the morning to scoop that poop and make our beach fabulous for all to come to in the morning.
And clean up the parking lot, break the sand, have everything ready when the first. A lot of times residents get there before the lifeguards. Not speaking of.
Right.
And this is, this is part of that increase of the 5,000 because we figure it's about $35, $3600 in the beach line, salary line. That's the increase. So how are you going to find somebody that's coming?
One hour a day. We had a teenager last year did.
I know.
Well, because I never, everybody can.
Well, once we hired him, it took the, us being all that daily about goose poop off the table, so.
Can't we make it a job for the lifeguards and make them do it?
No, they're getting too late.
Yeah, yeah, and I.
So why, and what I wanted was the two maintainers we're hiring to do rec park.
Yeah.
That can't be their first stop on their way to rec park to ride the mowers and do the weed whacking.
It's possible.
$2,500. So we are hiring two people to do rec park, correct?
At 30 hours a week. All mowing in town.
Yes, all mowing, okay.
Listen, we'll talk about that, but.
I'm sorry?
We'll just talk about that because she's the one scheduling some.
But it is possible. That's a no solution.
Okay, we'll look into that. Anything else?
I guess I'll have to let the floor go. I'm good to go. That's it.
Actually, I have some questions for you now. In your, in your rec program and stuff, can you tell us a little bit about the summer concert series? Or any events that you'd like to do, anything that would come before the board to ask for some funds to make things vibrant and?
Well, heck yeah, I would. Currently in the process of getting a couple bands together. And looking to have one in June, July, and August. We would like to make it a festive environment. I did reach out to Columbia Package Store to be a sponsor. Thank you for that lead. Steve, and they were great. They're excited about it. So the intent is that.
I never said nothing about alcohol.
You definitely didn't, and that's why I was.
Please continue. Nice job.
So in saying that, we are looking for sponsorships along that line, but we're hoping to do, we want to do road race, we have a road race in the works. We'd like to do some swim races. We're going to use that lake as a possible ability to do biathlon, maybe triathlon, we're working on that. And doing some things at the beach. So in that sense, you know, so trying to get. While we have our favorites that I, you know, that have been performing every year, expanding it a little bit more, doing the survey that I put out to the community. One of those areas that they were really interested in was a concert series. And so I think that there's people behind that and the idea of, you know, what builds a community better than music, you know, food? And some celebration on a nice summer night.
Yes. So is there a budget for that? Or what are we doing? How are we paying for that?
And a good question. So I'm trying in the process right now, trying to gather sponsorship. And so, you know, I don't know how good, you know, or that will go. I do want to throw out a big thank you to the Discovery Zone. They just came through as a platinum sponsor. So I, you know, one that'll help chip away at the process of that. And so being new to this, you know, budget process, is that something that is, I do put together before the board and asking for some items, some financial support?
You probably should come to us and ask us to put aside some money for that type of thing. And we'll talk about it and vote on it and stuff. What, how much is a platinum sponsor?
$1,000. So I was, you know, it was fairly nice for Discovery Zone to reach out.
And then that about what a band cost of?
It's about, if, you know, for the going, what I'm getting right now is in the 800 to 1,200 dollars for a band. The eight, you know, it depends on the pieces and a couple that we have right now. You know, they're usually asking prices in that 900 to 1,100 range.
Did I throw you at it, Chris? Anything else we want to talk about?
Maybe someday, not yet.
Um, okay, now here's the part where you said every other one is a no. So I'm throwing it out there. I might get a yes here. I've been having, people are loving the rec park. They love everything about it. And they love that one basketball court, but they'd love a second basketball court.
No.
Okay, I'll, I'll come back with the, skip that to another one the next time.
You know what, right? I have to be honest with you. It is nice up there. The rec park and the basketball court is very well used. Let's get by the next, let's get the other pickleball court in there and the disc golf that I've been asking about for two years now. And we'll, we'll, we'll circle back into basketball, okay?
All right, thank you.
Another year.
All right, fair enough.
I do want to say congratulations to you. You were in the current, on the community page about your.
Women in sports.
Women in sports. I'm not sure that was the title, but what you did with you in partnership with E.O. Smith and everything was a nice article. And thank you.
Thank you. It was a nice surprise to see that.
Yeah, any questions?
All right, so her budget's not quite done? Right, oh, we got it. It's March 7th.
No questions? Excellent. All right. Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Okay, facilities, I don't see Jason unless he's the 1-864-28. Is that you, Jason?
I should ask these to do this and find themselves.
Okay, this is Sue texting. She did it in the chat.
That is me.
Oh, okay, great. And really, the, one of the discussion items of facilities, he doesn't have any reminders, is a request for $30,000 to upgrade our fire panels and our security cameras. Bev and I think there might be enough money from projects completely under budget in ARPA to handle that. And not go through the budget. Jason, do you want to expand any further on that request?
So that request, we have some preliminary quotes. Basically, Murphy House is currently not covered under any. It has no alarm panels. It doesn't have a burglar alarm. It doesn't have a fire alarm. Murphy House is, that alarm panel is failed and not repairable. But that dollar amount that we're requesting is not just that. It's also Town Hall. And it's also camera upgrades for Murphy House, Town Hall. And we are looking at some camera upgrades for rec park itself. So that's where that number comes from. Murphy House is kind of a must do and Town Hall will be a must do. If it, if it isn't this year, it will be within the next year or two because the fire panel, the alarm panel there, not the burglar alarm panel. That's already broken and not working. But the fire alarm panel at the Town Hall is outdated and not repairable. We can't get parts for it. But it is still functional at the moment. So that's where that request comes from. The only other capital request is to replenish the HVAC fund. We didn't replenish it last year because we didn't really have to. So we're looking at 30 for that to replenish it this year. And then there's the regular operating budget. However, you guys have questions on that.
So the last budget had 20. Your request was to make it a full 30. So it's an additional 10,000. Yes, right.
Correct. The, the, the projection is to, to fund that, that line at 20 per year. But last year we, we didn't fund it. So this year we're looking at funding it at 30.
Okay, any questions for Jason? What is the balance in that HVAC fund?
The current balance is 46,000.
So Jason, there's 46,000 in an HVAC fund now, and you're asking for another 30?
So I suspect that 46, based on our conversation the other day, and one more project we're going to do this current fiscal year. I suspect that, that balance will be about 29 by the end of this fiscal year. So yes, it'll bring us back up to that roughly 70. Well, it'll bring it up, bring us up to 60, actually.
Jason, you're talking HVAC, Stephen's talking ARPA.
No.
No.
I'm talking HVAC.
Nope, we're talking HVAC.
Okay.
Yep, so Bev is saying that it's 46 at the moment, but we have one more project that we're doing this year. And that's the control systems at the Senior Center. And those, that quote came in at close to 17,000. So once you take that out of that, we're going to be down.
29, 29.
About 30 or just under 30. So you put the 30 back in and we'll, we'll be back at 60, which is a very comfortable level for any new projects. Of course, we've done a lot of work to our HVAC around the entire town. But when you see a large system fail of any kind. We've seen repair bills in the, in the range of 7 to 14,000. So having that just there to cover us to do upgrades and to also do full replacements when we see a re, see a repair bill that doesn't make sense. And we say instead of repairing it for seven, let's replace it for 14. Was the idea of the HVAC fund and so far it's working. And it, it would be good to make sure that we have a good, healthy balance in there so that it, it, it isn't, oh my God, where's the money going to come from, kind of situation.
Tell me about the HVAC systems and the different facilities that you're concerned about. Because, you know, we're sitting in a room in this building here and the splits are pretty new and it's kind of covered.
Yep.
Actually, we're so good that we're sweating, but.
I guess that's good.
Other areas have been, been done also. So tell me where your concerns are.
Yeah, so we're doing, we're doing really well, getting things upgraded. My concerns would be the Senior Center, which originally we, you know, when I, when I took over a few years ago. We were just going to replace everything over there. I think there was a budget line item of 50 or 60,000 dollars, which wouldn't have caught. Which replacing everything would have actually cost more than that, but we have done nothing to the Senior Center in the last few years, luckily. But the control systems are basically outdated and that is one of the projects we're looking at doing this spring. Which was what I was mentioning, that we'll be using 17 more thousand this year. But there's other, there's other items even at the Senior Center. There's. There's condensers for the air conditioners. They're functioning. So until they break, why, why replace them? But those condensers, when they need replacing, are going to be about 14 to 20,000 dollars a piece. And there's two of them. The fire department, we've spent a fair amount of money there, way more than what was previously budgeted. But we've done a change to the controls for the radiant heating there. We've replaced a pump there for 6, 7,000 dollars. We've also replaced condenser there. We've put in mini splits in the offices at the fire department. At the Town Hall, we had an unexpected, on Yeoman's Hall, not in the side that you're sitting in right now. But at Yeoman's Hall, we had an unexpected crack in the seal in the boiler. That was a close to $8,000, you know, repair.
Jason?
So, yeah.
Jason, you're giving me all of the we haves and my guess is they've been taken care of. Tell me about concerns for the future.
What can happen. Um, so my, the things that I would be most concerned about for the future are the condensers at the Senior Center. Of course, the money that's there would cover that. And potentially pumps at the fire department. And again, the money would be there if, if the HVAC fund is, is funded. As far as any new projects, I think we're done with projects. We've put mini splits where they belong. We put mini splits at Murphy House. I don't, I don't know if everybody knows that, but the Murphy House now has mini splits, so they have air conditioning and heating through mini splits instead of the oil system. So I think we're in pretty good shape. But there are old items still left at the fire department at the, and the Senior Center that, you know, we want to make sure we have a healthy balance there so that if something comes up, we're not going, where does the money come from?
Okay. So other than HVAC and stuff, facilities, what else we looking at?
Um, other. No, no major concerns. Well, you saw the, the, the five-year plan, but the, you mentioned earlier, so I figured I might as well address it, but the, the boathouse. We found plans. Those plans are not adequate at all. They're not right. I, I don't know how else to say it. But we need to get plans done and that's in the process. We need to get that rebuilt. I'm, I'm hoping that Kerma's going to cover what happens as far as finances go related to that. But we're working on getting plans drawn and, and getting that project going because that's, I mean, spring's right around the corner. And that was a completely unexpected loss. And we're doing great up at DPW. We're well within budget for the office building. Got insulation quote today that actually came in lower than, than budget. So we're moving right along. Plumbing is done. Electrical is started. So that is on track and things are, things are good.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have a question? You know, the fact that your list is really kind of small, you and Dan are doing a nice job out there, so we appreciate it.
Thank you. We're, we're trying, that's for sure.
Good. Anything else for Jason? I, I, my, my thing would to be, I don't know if I'd go 30. I'd be happy with 20 to re. Feed the HVAC. We're spending 17. We're putting 20 back. You heard him. There, you know, something could happen. Well, something always could happen. That's why I have confusion. Yeah, but at 50, we're. I'm just saying, as we put it together and send it to Five Pack. If something, if, if, if condensers at the Senior Center are blue, we can have the money. Guess what? We get the money. General fine, so. Okay. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Stephen.
Hey, can you, can you give me a call? I have a couple of things I'd like to talk to you about tomorrow.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks.
What? Consideration hanging. Okay. Who's up? This is Alcee. Why are you just doing that? Well, just answer questions.
Oh, here, just answer questions, okay.
And this is their $6,000 ask.
How much do we give them now? How much do we give them now? Bev, do you know, do we give them anything?
So last year was just 1,255 dollars, but they're doing more. I think you'd request more for trails and maintenance and.
So Hop River Preserve, this is the new one we acquired. You might put up a guardrail, $2,400. Is that for parking?
Yes, that would be a ground parking lot.
Are you going to put the same kind you have up at rec park?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm very concerned, people going down here and hitting those with their car. I mean, it happened numerous times up at rec park. Can we put curbing in front of it and everything? Can we? You know what I mean? I, I like that.
The wood ones, right?
Yeah, but I'm just, I'm concerned about. Put rocks in front of.
Oh, you know, it's late. Telephone balls down front.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
That's a simple, easy idea.
Yeah, something, something.
Just wanted to be reached by a.
Right, chief. Well.
The.
Ground pen, yeah.
The actual parking lot is in the DPW.
Yes, yeah, the Millings and stuff, yeah, yeah. Ground penetrating radar.
Yes, that's a one-off thing. Do you know ground penetrating radar?
I think it's a radar that really can.
Penetrates the ground.
Yeah, I was going to say that, but I'm not in the seriousness of it. I mean, don't they use that to find human remains and? We find somebody down there, it kind of shuts down the whole place.
Penetrates to a certain depth. And it will. And it creates a picture or graph. For instance, disturbed soil and undisturbed soil will appear different. Very foundation. So without digging the whole thing up, you can get a picture of what's there.
I'm going to, because I remembered Joan being here and telling me how we're going to. Not actually dig it up, but we're going to kind of have placards to say how it would be and so that type of thing. But now we're talking about ground penetrating and you just said digging up.
Well, no, I mean, these are not digging. We don't want to dig. We want to penetrate with the radar. She wants to find the actual locations of the buildings.
So.
Without having to dig everything.
So that, all the clearing that we've been doing down there was to allow access for the ground, you know, penetrating radar. So that'll be scanning all around, where are the foundations? And then be able to try to figure out what was the original building, what was newer? Where was there any kind of underwater tunnels for the water to drive the turbines and stuff? So that's pretty much, it's a one-time cost. And the person who's going to do it, do it is donating, I think, 16 hours of their time free as a part of.
Is this their gear?
Yeah. So this is, this is a service.
A service.
16 hours.
So I guess my question is. When you map all this out. What is, what is it, what does it do for us? Because we're going to have placards, we're not actually digging anything up. We're clearing where we believe this is. What is it actually doing for us?
It's providing a site, very much like the root cellar, a site that. You know, that we didn't dig everything up. They, well, we have nice plaques that explain the history. And this is another piece of Columbia's history. This is part of what built Columbia. This is a history of industry, where it was the root cellar. It's a history of settlers and farmers.
Invasive control.
So there's all sorts of invasive plants down there. That's what controlled that from coming back.
How? Spreading?
To keep it from spreading. There's whatever chemical application, I believe.
It, it is a chemical application. However, it's. It's not spraying. It's, you cut down an old autumn apple. You've got a stone and you take a little paintbrush and paint it with essentially brand new. And that will be drawn into the roots and. But it's not an application all over and by anything.
Okay, bike rack?
It's a nice to have.
Can't they lock their bikes? Can't they lock their bikes to the guardrail? Or the significant like. Or the signage post?
I was going to say the signage.
The number five.
Come on, Stephen, it's 300.
I'm trying, I'm trying, I got to prove to the people, I got, I'm trying to save something here. Signage. After they're done painting the little stones, can they paint the signs? You know, actually, the signage, is that, I'm going to ask you honestly, is that enough? Because those, I do like the signage. I do like going to places, looking around and stuff. But you have to be able to read them after a year or two because the sunlight and the weathering, everything tends to turn or they fade out, in my opinion. Is 500 enough for signage? Is that what you're talking about? Or are you talking about, don't park here, please don't hit the guardrail?
It's, it's probably going to be a sign. Hop River Preserve, it's a town of Columbia. It could be though.
If you, if you go to the root cellar, the signs there, the national park type signs, they run 700, $900, $900 a sign.
More than that now.
Yeah, so once you've got all the historic information and you can apply for grants to, you put all the signs and stuff there.
Didn't we join something? Yes, we joined something to be able to be one of 29 historic. Yes, we joined something to be able to be one of twenty-nine historic places, didn't we? We applied to our historic preservation designation.
We're in the process of allowing-
Cause we, do we have an intern?
So we got a radar, come on.
The intern.
We have an intern.
But this, this, this is the first crack, they have next year for more signage. Um, but this year, we just want to put a sign to identify this is in a Hop River Preserve.
Anybody else? Okay. But yeah, there's more.
That's the ground. We did, we did um, approach the historical society, but shipping it out, the ground penetrating radar. But they didn't buy it. Are you ready to use it? I mean, is it clear enough down there, or is it not a lot?
Yeah, Joan did a lot of work getting things ready and then, once she got things cut down, I hauled it up, so D G W can haul it away. So it's almost like an open field now, because it's incredible how much has changed.
What about the beautification?
The other thing that's going on, I don't know how much you're aware of, is the Hop River Lines, they're working on putting signs along the whole Hop River rail trail. And a part of that would be at some point, having a sign on the Coventry side of the river, directing people over to our Hop River site.
When they fix the bridge.
That's all.
When we fix the bridge, no.
It's a joint, joint project.
It's a federal, we're partners with Coventry, overseeing. No, 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 the Hop River Bridge?
Oh, you're talking about, yes, I'm talking about, yes.
Those two Hop River Bridges is the walking bridge, I have a big one in the cottage, you can do whatever they want.
But Tom's talking about a sign at, at the tar bridge, it says, hey, just go across the river. Yeah, on the Coventry side of the rail trail, it would say, hey, this is a nice place to stop and go picnic and see the history of Columbia at this historic site.
Right.
Fish and river.
Yeah. That's all we have on the constitution. Now, fees, transit fees, we have an analysis of all of our fee structure. Is that the next blue tab?
Alright.
Hundred forty-one thousand short of total cost for running the transfer station after you pull out the- Basically, forty-four thousand, we received in revenue last year. That leaves a hundred forty-one thousand.
You spent forty-four thousand in seller.
We did.
Yeah.
I went um, with Casella, I mean, I'd take a-
Six thousand.
That's it?
Well, on top of the hundreds of thousands we paid.
How much, well, we paid Casella a hundred fif- a hundred fifty-one thousand.
That was last year.
That was last year and so far this year, we've already spent ninety-seven thousand a year today.
We were about halfway through the year, so divide last year by half for paying more.
June fir-, June thirtieth, the end of the year, right? So more than that for-
Yes, you're like-
March, April, May, June.
Yeah. Yeah.
Two-thirds in the way.
We don't have a choice, though, we have to.
Correct. And it's supposed to go up what next year? Do you know, do you know that?
Yeah.
So, so we pull in, what do you say, we pull, how much in uh, transfer, okay.
So look at this column, this is year to date, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, that ended June thirtieth. So the total we collected last season, because all your revenue comes in June, so our revenue is only come in to the- To the sixty-eight hundred so far, but we brought in forty-three thousand nine hundred fifty. In sticker revenue, that's just stickers.
Okay.
And then we brought in another, how much in fees? The thirty-two?
Almost thirty-three thousand in fees.
Thirty-three in fees, that's all ways.
Forty-four, so I'm sorry, so that's-
So last year-
Seventy-five thousand.
Right, and about seventy-six, almost seven, seven thousand dollars.
In fees.
And yet we pay out.
Pay out?
Hundred forty-one.
Two hundred thirty-eight thousand is the total expansion minus those fees.
Two hundred and eighteen. Little pounds, little pounds.
Okay, little pounds.
Yeah, two eighteen, we brought in seventy.
Right. So a hundred forty-one.
So basically, a hundred forty-one was covered by property tax.
So basically, if you increase your stickers to a hundred dollars and fifty dollars, you would cover that. But that's a dollar, it's more than a dollar.
You would have mutiny.
I agree, but that's just if you, if you, if your goal, and most towns' goal is not to cover all the costs of the fees. But just for enlightenment, I called Casella and they charge fifty dollars a month. For one week. One week pick.
Once a day, once a week.
Once a week pick. So it's six hundred dollars for a year for pickup. So forty is a bargain of the century, but some towns like Hebron-
It's in their taxes, they pay it, it's in their taxes, right?
Now Lebanon does the charge per bag, I don't think we wanna go about that route.
Again. We're getting over to-
And um-
You have to have a really-
I don't wanna say much, but I heard that.
We got a lot of bags up.
Yeah, we got bags.
We still have them.
Uh, I have, I have a printout of every town all around us and how they do the fee structure. Pretty much everybody's forty dollars a cubic yard, that's kinda standard.
That's bulk.
For bulk, Beth Lund did recommend in our fee structure, tonight, if you wanna make a motion, we raise- Cost per tire from about fifty to three dollars and that's break even, because we're losing about fifty there in tire.
Retires, we bring in a lot?
I don't know, but huh, there's a tire.
It's not broken out, she had the- So they, I mean, basically, we paid last year twelve hundred dollars, this year we've already spent almost fourteen hundred to get tires removed, so. Bigger happens, it's being covered in fees.
Right.
Selected.
That's not a big ticket, but we'd-
We'd, obviously, if we charge, Mark thinks if we charge a hundred, more people will get at-home pickup, so our costs will go down.
I don't know. I don't think so, we gotta do something.
I don't think so, no.
And when you get a rear lot, lots, lots of red.
You're, you're a subject matter expert.
I just encourage you not to charge um-
Seniors.
Much or anything for tires, otherwise, I'm gonna have to, we're gonna have to.
Pick them up?
Take them out of the-
Take them out of the-
Same for us.
Well, this really drops off tires, I mean, most people go, go get the tires replaced and then they, they take it at the end.
They charge you, but they take them.
Right, right, so you charge either way, so, I mean, there's people that change their tires at home, I mean.
I don't know, I don't know who brings them in, but there are tires up there.
Well, it's, it's free to throw them in our land, so, you guys say, do it legally.
So you wonder what-
Hope someone else will clean them up.
What the future?
So we take them out, but it's allowed, they have access to say, yeah. Yeah, it can be a lot.
We already covered that.
We've picked up a lot of tires.
I know, did you see when the Boy Scouts did a cleanup at the bottom of the lake?
How many tires did you?
It was a lot, okay, I, I get it, we're not gonna stop. People dump it to save a dollar for a tire by charging three dollars for a tire.
So do we even, when there's scrap metal, but sell them?
Yeah, we, we do.
Good for them to take it away or something.
We made what? Is it eighteen?
So last year was eleven thousand eight, but right now it's only eighteen hundred, so I think there's been a decrease in, if you get a credit. And I don't think, we used to get money for my giant scrap metal, but they're out there.
But it's Columbia's way.
Some of the D P W down here, can you do that?
I know, farmers just take tires, they put on the plastic.
Exactly where it is on the D P W down here, get that.
When they cover the silage, but we don't, there's not a lot of farms, I think people use, they get free tires or weight to hold things down. And then they don't want them anymore.
Alright, what's your thoughts on raising the fees of the transfer station? It doesn't, I'm not saying a hundred, I get it.
What's, what is the fees now?
Forty dollars for a normal family and twenty for a senior.
I mean, what if you rolled out kind of a phase over the next couple of years and they tell people that, you know, you're thinking about, you know, whatever, X dollars next year and then, you know, X dollars the following year and see what kind of-
From fifteen to twenty-five.
Yeah, I'm thinking ten dollars, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, just keep-
But just to-
That's what I'm about this year, and I think what I'm trying to do is-
Fifty, twenty, and twenty-five.
What you're doing. Yeah.
It's been a couple of years since we moved it up since boarding, probably three or four or five years long.
We do get the complaints when people think it's too high.
I think it's-
I, I actually like not to raise the seniors, I think they're really struggling. I think seniors are having a hard time, especially if they're, they were just making it.
Well, I, I actually agree with you, that's number one, but I think the senior age is too young. To be honest with you.
What's the age?
Sixty-two.
You're in.
Close.
I don't know. Actually gets it from time. Uh, I mean. I get it from my wife, but now I'm getting my own sticker. Is the age too young, sixty-two, or just leave it, I mean, are we all in this or what?
I mean, sixty-two is a first, social security, but it's, but it's, but.
It all depends on your philosophy in terms of, it's just another tax, you're a tax people to do it anyway. He serves it.
So if you raise that age, people who have been paying half price all of a sudden-
We can do sixty-three anymore, so.
Well, and, and, and-
Cause I'm gonna retire at sixty-seven, I'm not retiring at sixty.
But what Bill's, to go along with what Bill's saying, is why are we raising it all then? Because their taxes at their house are paying the one forty, why are we raising it all? Cause their taxes in the house.
Because there's all those people who pay for it, who get a little resentful when they're paying it twice.
Well, there's, there's- If they're not getting pickup, then they're getting a sticker or-
Getting a sticker to, when they need bulk four and tires and brush.
They're dumping it down at the Upper Preserve. I mean, you're either getting a sticker or you're getting it picked up at home, otherwise, you, you gotta get rid of it somewhere, there's only two options, really, right?
There's a lot of people who get pickup.
I know, and the prices for pickup has gone up a lot.
Yeah, so, there's more people buying picture stickers.
Right, this could go up, the shock of Casella's pricing.
Oh, Casella's pricing, yeah, yeah.
It's six hundred a year, that's, that's a lot, that's a lot.
Alright.
I think we should go up to fifteen, twenty-five.
Fifteen, twenty, raise the year to sixty-five.
No, I don't think we should raise it.
You could raise it to sixty-three and then it doesn't really hurt anybody.
And next year is sixty-four.
Right.
Kind of like when they change-
Also, the same people that were up there.
So we'll never get a chance.
Why, why for office now?
Sure, no sir.
I don't think we should raise it.
Reach to sixty-two.
Personally, I just don't think taxes are even a question. Customer is a hundred bucks. I said personally, I would just rather have my taxes raised a hundred dollars or whatever, not have to pay a fee for the dump, it's just-
Nice down to the ground.
It's kinda like the beach fees and stuff, it's like, why not just all, we didn't raise the taxes a hundred bucks a house.
Cause there's a lot of people who-
Don't use-
No, I'm, I-
They don't go to the line.
Unfortunately, we don't have a survey, whether it's town, state, or federal government to say, I want my taxes to go to this, this, that's where they go, they go across the board.
Easy pass going into Red Park.
Yeah, I don't use the beach, why do I have to pay it through the lake?
Right.
My kids don't use the school anymore, so we don't, yeah.
Just leave the seniors alone, do fifty, twenty, go on, fifty, twenty. All those in favor?
Hi.
This is student connection.
It's recording.
Not again. Alright, what else, what's next, all the fees, okay, the next one is you- You go to like management.
Probably boat moorings would be possible, we're only charging a hundred dollars and the cost of maintaining the moorings is increasing. New lines, new swills, new anchors.
Does this, I mean, all this lake management and stuff, uh, is there? Revenue, yeah, very little revenue, lake management, they're six seventy-five, what's that for the keys?
That's the budget for the keys, yes.
I, I know. Otherwise, we'd have no revenue, right? Except for moorings.
How much do we charge for moorings?
Hundred. Hundred for a mooring and seventy-five for a kayak? No.
Hundred.
Hundred for both?
Yeah. What other towns, so that's-
Too much right now, like. Seems like a lot.
Is that for that?
They're not paying it. The revenue is going down.
We can't go up on that, I already made it.
Lake management, how, lake management, we spent twenty, how much we spent?
So, boat moorings, we've received in revenue one thousand nine hundred and boat keys are revenue of two thousand, two hundred. But half of that goes back, right?
No, that's net.
Oh, that's net?
The deposits are not in there.
Okay.
So, this, where it says salaries, nineteen thousand, that's great, that's gate and everything, you guys come out of there?
Yes.
Understand this. Final budget, from twenty-one to twenty-six, and most of that is- Gate and stuff, is my grant. Which twenty-five hundred is the kid that cleaned the beach.
That's not in, the, the cleaning the beach is not in there.
And so you said it was in the fifty-something, hundred dollar increase.
Oh, for next year, yeah, the, the beach cleaning is in the beach line, not in the-
Next.
My strength's in the exercise, yeah. So what do we look at this for, what are we thinking of doing? How many boat, how many boat moorings do we have?
Fourteen.
That's gonna really lose love.
Raise it twenty-five dollars, you think so?
Just more information, in case you wanted to see.
Okay, thank you, did we wanna go up in tires to three dollars?
We already go in one, haven't we?
No.
Oh, no.
I think we should go with the three dollars.
Yeah.
It's consistent.
Yeah.
It just comes to the cost.
I mean, you really think someone's gonna be more inclined to deposit it at Hop River for a fucking half?
You're probably right, because people that don't, I have a dumb sticker.
Do you want that July one or what? Three dollars?
No, you can't do it, do it July one, okay. We'll get it, we'll get it.
I'll jump out with, with, probably July first, isn't that when we start selling stickers, so probably do it.
Yeah, it should be, oh, yeah.
So when we hand out the new rules and regs for transfer station, it'll be in there. Okay.
So the moorings are staying there.
And the fees will start to make. Fifty, twenty, it's May first as well.
You want to make a motion for that?
Yeah.
Make a motion to raise the fees for tires to three dollars.
It'd be June first, because the stickers are sold in May, start-
But if we're selling them, we have better parts.
Yes, but the, yeah, those would be effective June, yeah.
Right, the new sticker, June.
Yeah, so May first is right then.
Make a motion to raise the fee to fifty and then make a motion to raise it three dollars per ton. What they, I make, so, so, I make a motion to raise the transfer station fee, fifty dollars for household or anybody in the house. And twenty dollars for senior and raise the tire disposal fee to three dollars per tire. Discussion, all those in favor? Orange what?
Beach passes.
How much do we pay for that?
Well, you bring in thirty-one thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars in revenue from that.
Yep.
So it's a sizable fee.
I think it's thirty?
Thirty? And there's a max for family.
Like hundred or something like.
It was like a hundred twenty maximum for family.
Yeah, and then it's just the out of towners, it's like.
Three hundred.
They're making.
Do they, out of towners get that?
There's a couple who do, from two hundred fifty, I'll imagine. And then it's a daily pass of five dollars, that's five, or five to the month.
Right, a lot of people do day passes.
Transfer, yeah, you transfer. Be over or something.
There's people that are chance that passes that are transferable and not.
But that pays a lot of the cost, bulk of the cost.
Okay with that.
You know, I'm old, I'm good keeping that, when it's.
So season pass, five to seventeen is twenty-five, eighteen to sixteen is thirty-five, sixty-two and over is fifteen. Non-residents are close, two hundred, five to seventeen, eighteen to sixteen, over is three hundred, and sixty-two and over is.
That's for out of town, right?
Non-residents.
Right on, right.
Okay, town, Columbia facilities, usually.
Uh, did we, is that hundred fifty dollars fee for the, that's the beach pavilion that we don't have at the moment? But the rec pavilion. Fifty dollars for a half day, did we wanna charge more for the new pavilion that has a kitchen?
Yeah.
To make it like a hundred for a half a day? Well, I don't know, I never knew it was a half day or more than.
What's this, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three?
Those are the revenues you achieved in, in twenty-one, twenty-two, and year-to-date, um, budget where. Also, COVID cut those down in twenty-one, twenty-two considerably?
Imagine.
Right.
We already bumped way up in the senior.
Rec park field usage.
So some camps and.
Those camps and leagues that come in and use it.
It's not big money, but.
Well, it's not, because we don't charge them anything. I see, out of town soccer teams up there playing, and I mean, how much do we charge?
But I think Columbia is involved in those leagues.
Has to be somebody from Columbia on the team, right?
Or our town is included in their region.
Uh, I, I think I would, the rec, the pavilion up top, what are you saying to me, you wanna make?
Well, maybe you can jump it up to seventy-five, because we're giving you a kitchen to use as well. Seven fifty.
Well, they're gonna use water, they're gonna use electricity, you know, they're not getting any of that down low.
And so you have not.
They have water.
There's water down low.
And there's electricity.
There's electricity, but there's not a kitchen, there's, there's a cattle pump that turns on and off, and there is a bathroom though.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is a flushable bathroom and sink.
Right. But it's just at the new one, it's easy, it's more, it just.
Well, there's refrigerators.
Right.
Make a motion, we charge seventy-five dollar usage fee for half a day, the new pavilion, fifty dollars remains the same for the other one.
Sounds good.
Any discussion, all those in favor? Rec park field uses from sponsors, future.
Now, it's open to talk about other budget lines of.
So, I got a nice breakdown on the library budget last year versus the ask of this year. Uh, you take a look at it, I don't know if you have any questions, Sue is on, I guess. And last year our grant was four thirty-nine. Our town grant last year was four thirty-nine, six twenty-six.
Yeah.
Yeah, and she's asking for four fifty-two, two.
No.
Four sixty-seven.
Four sixty-seven.
Where's that?
Requesting a four sixty-seven, budgeted four fifty-two, all right, I know.
No, so you, you're looking at the second sheet that I, that I made some.
Okay, all right, so look at this one. So. Says the same thing.
Right, so, so the second sheet shows the historical, if you're looking at the block.
Yeah, historical information, yeah.
So, so it went from twenty-one to twenty-two, um, two and a half, roughly two and a half percent.
Yep.
Um, from twenty, this current year, it went up to four point three percent, um, twenty, or eighteen thousand dollars. And now they're requesting twenty-eight thousand dollars, which is more like a six point four percent increase. What was presented the other week, I think they may have, uh, they may have used the, the initial requested budgeted amount, because we ended up, uh, reducing it like by, no, or six hundred twenty dollars, it, it wasn't much, but you know, it.
There was a change, we, we had requested that they make an adjustment last year.
Healthcare went down.
Healthcare went down, and we, we had asked all departments, if there's any little bit you can give back, and so they did make a reduction, and that was probably that one.
So, did you want me to elaborate more?
Yeah.
Please. Sure, so, so basically, what, what I did here was I, in the spreadsheet, I, did a side-by-side of what the current year is to this present year, so the. Salary wage increase is about a ten percent increase, uh, that's basically the lion's share of the increase that they're asking, it's like twenty-six thousand dollars. So it's basically, that's where the, the limit is, I mean, there's a lot of, um, decreases in some offers, and the library is proposing an increase in how much they're contributing to, to offset, um, a bunch of the other increases. But, um, to me, uh, without seeing the actuals, without seeing the details, you know, I. Personally, I'm struggling with a ten percent increase in wages when, you know, when we look at other areas where we're looking for potential increases. And I don't think, you know, we can afford such an increase elsewhere, so, um, that's an area where, you know, we at least can talk, ask questions, um, cause again, all we have is what's proposed, there's no actuals to support what.
So, Sue, I see your hands, we'll bring you on.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, um, one of the issues is that the budget that we proposed to you last year is not the budget that we are using currently. The board did make changes, they added more from our own incomes. And so it's not, what we're asking from you is not a ten percent increase in wages. We're asking roughly, I believe, I don't have the numbers in front of me, because I, I thought we would be doing this last week, not this week. Um, but I believe the wage line from current to our ask is a, well, with salary, with salary and benefits and health insurance, which is always a, a biggie, it's about ten to fifteen thousand dollar increase in that area. So our ask for the town, what we are asking as an increase is six point four percent. Our wages and salaries this year are at most going up four percent. And as I said last time, it's a combination of salary adjustment and minimum wage for which we're doing the same thing that everyone is doing. Um, I think that we probably last year should have followed the, the lead of actually the fire department, I think they were, had their hand on the pulse of things more, I know they, based on last year's budget, I think they requested like a seventeen percent increase. Um, we last year asked for a four point three percent increase, I think we probably should have adjusted more. But we are taking more money from our investments to cover the increase and the difference. I hope that made, made some sense.
One thing that'll help, we just got notified that healthcare.
So yes, today, this afternoon, the, I just got an email saying the health insurance is now gonna increase seven point one percent versus ten percent. So I have to adjust the budget for that, um, so Sue, you might want numbers for that.
Yeah, woo, woohoo, and we will, we will adjust that, that line down, and that will change these numbers.
Yeah, I just got that about four or five o'clock this afternoon, but I would try to confirm with a broker to see if he agrees that.
That's a good number, stay. You might wanna pad it, just.
Go up a little.
Wha- what, what would you, what would you like me to use as a number, and I'll, I'll adjust the figures and send it to you tomorrow?
I'll double check with the broker, but if you wanna go, this is a, you know, go to seven and a half for now or something, but, um, I don't think I, I was gonna say eight, but I think that's gonna be a little too high, if they're coming down that low, and they've been pretty much good about, since they started a twelve percent increase, so. Um, and I don't have the dental, which probably will be pennies anyway on an increase, so, um, probably go seven and a half, just to have a little buffer for you.
Okay, thank you.
That's all, I mean, what I did, the simple math, uh, you know, comparing, um, the last year's request for salaries, it was twenty, two, two hundred sixty-eight thousand eight oh nine, compared to two ninety, two hundred ninety-five thousand six hundred and seventy, I mean, that's.
Twenty-seven grand.
Yeah, I mean, that's ten percent. Yeah, that doesn't take into account the other FICA requirements, just, just add that.
Well, what it does is, I mean, they're, 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 they're gonna pay a difference of fifteen thousand in salaries from the, uh, they're asking the town to pay four point two five in wages at eleven thousand four twenty-four, and they're kicking in difference from the library request, are you, uh?
So I think the sheet you're looking at. Right, the one you handed out, Mark?
Yes.
It says. Three point two one?
Okay, there's a lot of numbers on here.
I see, four point two five.
We're, we're, right, so, so, so basically, what, what that's showing you is, this current year's grant for salaries and wages is two hundred sixty-eight thousand eight oh nine, right?
It's current.
That's current, right?
Yeah.
They ask is two hundred ninety-five thousand, six hundred and seventy thousand, so what, that next number is two hundred eighty thousand, two thirty-three, is basically taking the two sixty-eight, eight oh nine, with a four and a quarter increase, which is an increase of eleven, eleven thousand four twenty-four. And then what you see in the difference column to the far right, that's basically showing fifteen thousand four hundred thirty-seven.
Okay, so you're taking the four point two five and, and using that, because that's a number that had been thrown out before?
Yes.
Okay, and you're saying that's what, to be fair, that's what we should offer?
Put, yes, put towards the, yeah, salaries and wages compared to, to the.
Yeah.
Can, can I add something else to this discussion?
Sure.
And, and that is what we ask for as, as a grant from the town is a bottom-line lump sum for what we think we need in addition to what we think we can get ourselves. And the Board of Selectmen does not have the purview to say where or what line we are going to put money towards. So what really.
We haven't heard you to say what line we give you, though.
That, definitely, but I think for the sense of discussion, um, I, I'm not sure, you, you all can say, okay, we don't wanna give you three percent or five percent or ten percent on, on this line or that line. But what we've already done is juggled our finances around so that what we need is possibly an increase in one place, we can get from designated, or we can hope for the best to get from grant money to reduce whatever ask we have for you. So really, the question is, are you comfortable giving us twenty, I believe it's twenty-six thousand dollars in increase this year? Because unfortunately, the current line items that you have are not accurate for what our current budget is.
So Sue, I have a couple of questions, since you, uh, brought the discussion, how you did. Uh, how many days was the library closed due to weather or storms or anything last year? Do you know?
I don't have an exact number, but I can give you a ballpark that I believe it was maybe four or five. I can, I can go tomorrow and, and, and look it up and give you an exact, but I am very confident with four or five as a, as a high number.
I was just out of power for ten days last year, um, how about, uh?
I get, I get, I, I'll tell you where I'm struggling, and I, I, I try not to make this weigh in too much on my things. The, the library, I've been over there a couple of times, I don't feel they rely, I don't use the library, to be honest with you, I hope a lot more people use it than I do. But the library is. I think libraries, more libraries are online now, brick and mortar, and more.
That's actually not true, um, that's not accurate. We circulate more in physical items than we do in electronic, and we are not alone, we are like every library in the state of Connecticut, that's the case. Um, I think Amazon did a wonderful job at marketing for their Kindle to say everything was going to go electronic and libraries are obsolete. Um, but it's not true, um, it, it's simply not supported by fact. We are actually the only organization in town that serves birth through seniors. We have multiple collections, we don't just have books, we have a library of things. So if you want a pickleball set and don't have one, wanna test out the game, you can come to the library and check out a pickleball set. And check out a pickleball set or a frisbee golf set. So Steve, I think it's unfortunate you don't use the library. I certainly appreciate that you don't have a car that, that cooperates with audio. I, I understand that completely, um, but. I, I would like to think that maybe you could check out a book or a, a movie sometime or. Or one of the stuff that we have or come to programs. I reminded that a couple of weeks ago, you had lamented that tourism bureaus don't. Don't do anything in the state of Connecticut except Mystic Seaport and maybe the casinos. Um, I think it's important to note that the library is actually one of the main. Locations that draws people to town. Now, we see. Not what we used to, but we, we're still seeing. Tons of people a day that come in and say to us, oh, I moved to town because I went and visited the library. Oh, it's great because I can come to the library with my toddler and I get to meet people. Who are in the same demographic as I am. Um, there's a whole lot that the library does that's far from electronic. So I, I would say again, the real question that I would pose to the board is, are you comfortable? With increasing our grant by twenty six thousand dollars, because that's what we. Are requesting that we are saying we need at this point to keep the level of service. And actually, I should be, to be fair, it will be less because of the, the health insurance, I just, I don't know what those numbers are.
They're asking for additional twenty eight thousand, which is four hundred fifty seven thousand six fifty three, that's what they're asking.
We're gonna meet again and just finalize all this stuff.
The first meeting in March, you'll have to vote on the budget.
You have to finalize and vote, because by Friday, I have to send stuff in.
And they start to.
Anybody else have questions on this? Okay, who else are we looking at? Oh, anything in here? All right, back to Sue.
Sure, I, and I will, I will amend those numbers for health insurance and get them remarked tomorrow.
Okay, great, thanks Sue. In capital, Beth dropped off a memo to me today. You'll see a flag with a. It's, it's worth reading, because she addressed some of the things she heard in the meeting last week.
Okay, currently, the two thousand backhoe is no longer role working and cannot be utilized as a backup for public works. Okay, we knew that, right? There's imperative that the backhoe is available in good condition to withstand storm related. I want that new one, the little one, we got the mini, doesn't that help? Could that help in, in a, in a storm?
We need to get her on a trailer, she can't go zooming down the highway. We have a trailer, right? The downtime required, we searched, what did we say last week? Did we, you wanted to consider you, so she went out in the marketplace and she showed you. Five views of machines right now, but none of them have a hydraulic thumb or an extendable dipper stick. So I said to Beth, what does that mean? Why is that something that's important and that's on the back?
Okay, so for a hundred and sixty nine thousand, you give the hydraulic thumb and extendable dipper stick.
The dipper stick allows you to reach further and deeper down outside of the road and pick things up. And the thumb is critical for picking up trees and rocks. Just some of the concerns.
Whether it costs to buy those things, it's a question.
Yeah, so those prices are there.
That's about, that's the, now to buy this, I mean, extra parts.
So, I mean, that backhoe is the only. Equipment.
The price, right, it's only capital.
What did they get last year?
Yeah, well, they ordered a dump truck, which we can't get.
That's an Arco one.
That was Arco, right? Last year they got a um. Loader. That's gonna tell me what we're going for.
So last year, the. They got, well, at least this year, they got thirteen thousand dollars to get a schedule or plus they got a hundred and thirty three thousand to buy the. Loader this year.
But was that Arco money? I want to know what we budgeted out of town money.
Our town money was thirteen thousand and then we did a town meeting this year to give her a hundred and thirty three thousand because the loader went.
The loader wasn't.
And we had to get her.
Worth it, so basically, we, we budgeted the thirteen grand for the mower.
Yes.
So now we're looking to budget an extra hundred and fifty six thousand.
Hundred and seventy, hundred and sixty nine.
Hundred and fifty six, the difference.
Yes.
Okay. After that comes a freight liner, comes an international, comes a sweeper for two fifteen. Okay. Look at the used ones, used ones are.
How many hours is this two thousand?
Nineteen hundred, oh, the two thousand?
Yeah.
It's near death. Basically what she's telling us. No, we can bring it down to that preserve or just dump it.
The lake is warm.
Also, that's the one in transportation, yeah, they're constantly fixing up.
No, um, oh yeah, and it cannot be backed up, sure, the one that's on the street now, the two can't go on the road.
They tried, but. They're trying, they tried.
Oh, Stephen, again, number two.
What?
The other thing we added, we updated the capital with a hundred and twenty five thousand, you guys.
For the culvert.
For the culvert, additional culvert changes. So the two hundred, which was washed, hundred and twenty five, that should be.
Well, I want everything, culvert number comes out and I have to look at it.
Yeah, so right now your increase in the town capital is two hundred and three thousand dollars or twenty one point two seven percent.
So it'd be three seventy one. Two.
But you want, but, well, then you have to decide if you want, are you definitely bringing the H back down ten? You did have.
H back in this whole process when we put in third, we put it back down to twenty.
If you want, make a decision on that right now, if you want that back out.
If we have a problem with the twenty for H back, it'll bring it to fifty thousand dollars. After you take out the seventeen from the forty nine, you give them the twenty thousand, it's about fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, so bring that back down to twenty, okay.
Yeah, I have to, it seems like we're doing this differently this year. We could get everybody a revised budget. Early enough that you could, you could look at actual questions, calling it, hey, wow. Just so I can have you back. So, it's March seventh, isn't it, four seven, yeah.
Backhoe, one sixty nine. You know, I, I guess.
Yeah, it sounds like we need it, it just seems like it's just a lot of stuff.
They, they, you know, I, I look at the budget and they do it terribly well.
So, I, I, I would propose that we put it in and then when we get the final. Numbers and everything, we can take a look at it, but I, I honestly. They're all pretty fiscally responsible.
They're gonna come down with FICAP.
Yeah, yeah, but I'd like to give them a, a budget that we.
So the other question would be the extra hundred and twenty five being put in for.
For.
The culvert, if you want to wait on that.
You know, we just reduce it a bit.
So.
How long have we been waiting for that?
So right now we put in two hundred thousand as a transfer from the Hopper River Bridge project.
Yeah.
To start doing the engineering and the specs and all that, because we don't know exactly how much these are gonna cost from when we're gonna start working on.
And we want to be ready for, we want to have a two weeks to come with all this federal money.
So there could be federal money to help pay for some of this stuff.
Need the money budgeted upfront, when we can do the engineers, be ready.
So is whether you want to just take it out and then see how it's going next year and you can always do a town meeting if we need to start funding next year, sure.
And how much does it cost to do the engineering on one? I think that's why she put in the two hundred thousand.
Uh, one will be more expensive because it's a um, a full culvert, the other one is a pipe, so one's much more expensive.
Yeah, but you start with the small one first, right?
How long has that culvert been there? Tom, you've been, we've been in town and you've driven over that culvert many times going home.
Where is it?
We're talking about. On the road?
By the dam?
Yeah.
There's a sink, it's, there's a dip.
It's been there a long time.
Right, so how much engineering do you really need? Rip out the old one, put in a new one.
I don't know why I have to allocate.
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a racket.
You think?
Rip out the old one, put in a new one. To last thirty years, you save two hundred thousand dollars.
Well, it's just unfortunate that when they didn't do the dam at Mono Pond, it was discovered that the state. Didn't want to work with the town to get this all done at the same times or, you know, maybe they could have helped with some of the replacements.
We've had a two-year delay while we wait for their permit.
It's the Army Corps of Engineers that were informed this.
Army and um. I think there's another permit we're waiting for.
The deep?
Deep.
But you said the Army Corps of Engineer does one person.
That's like her, doing permit. In the stair.
And now that you mentioned deep. You want to talk about uh, filling of the lake? Let's get through this first.
Oh, we have a permit on the gate too.
Do we want the one twenty five in, in the, in the culvert? Can we just, just leave it in there, Beth? We want the one sixty nine for the backhoe. We'll put it in there, we'll see what the numbers shake out when she gives us the final next week. Thank you.
Believe both.
Yeah.
Let's take that ten.
And that's why I, we can throw out about the refilling of the lake.
Bring that up tomorrow night.
Tell the board selection, so we know what out there might be.
Oh, you're talking about the beavers?
Yes.
And whom, what?
Well, we're having trouble, um, DOT brought Beth and Andy Andrews. And I guess Andy actually walked from Red Park to this problem in the swamp area. But the beavers have built like a two hundred yard dam. And pretty soon they're gonna cut off the water source to Columbia and the water's gonna start going the other way and flood sixty six. So they're damming all around sixty six.
They're damming on this side.
They're, they're damming on the north side.
Yes, the north side of, of the Utley. And if we don't, if we don't release the pressure on the dam. We're gonna have to, they're not gonna allow us to be able to do anything because the rush of water. You'll need the Army Corps of Engineers to de, to design something, unless we put pumps up there and pump it over to relieve the pressure to be able to take.
Well, we're, the Beaver Dam might flow. Um, we could lose.
No.
Oh, they do.
Okay, I'm not gonna fight about that, I don't have all that. The bottom line is it feeds Columbia Lake.
Oh, sure.
As the dam rises, as they build it up, it will be harder to take apart. And the water will rise, so much so that it will rise towards sixty six before it goes over the dam. So, the bottom line is we have to eliminate the dam so the water is able to freely flow to Columbia Lake.
So what do they propose?
I'm not, I'm crooked so far, how do you look at it?
You have to trap the beavers first and you blow the dam.
Or, or blow the dam. I'd go up there now, just, you know.
Wait, no.
But they saw a thumb drive thing.
So I've watched the other side of the road, the south side of the road. Yeah, you don't win against beavers.
I know, you take them out, you have to take them out of there, you have to trap them out of there.
But then other ones come in?
Right, it just keeps.
They just keep coming in.
Well, we'll.
Beaver deceivers where they can't actually dam the culvert.
Beaver deceivers.
Yes, there's a such thing, Lebanon's really good making.
You know what, put the keys over there.
Do you have a problem coming June and, you know, you got no water in the lake?
Yeah. I had a beaver dammed back at my house.
Those are unbelievable.
I think somebody took the beavers away. They don't, if they come back, they don't come back like right away.
No, not sure, not, not Josh, it was trust.
I think it's Josh, yeah.
That's the other problem.
They came back twenty years later. It was, they flooded the back of my, in the area back there, they totally flooded, I think my neighbor took the beavers away. We talked about.
Turn them away like here?
It was a beautiful animal, but I saw it in the water, there were two of them, they're beautiful. They take them away.
So we make a really bad film.
So just, just know that they're pretty, to the odyssey. I mean, more of a concern.
So, we're also, I hate, working on scheduling with DOT this. Bad accident, you said, on the eighty seven, on the curve by the dam.
We're copying the state DOT, right, that we need some more lighting, some.
Flashers, some hay.
We know it is, and, and speed would help, I mean. Apparently, when you said it last week.
Yeah, the car flipped and blew up. The poor woman's friend, not, not, she said, that's where they always, cars always end up.
It's the second car that, in the last six months, it went through there and engulfed in flames and everything.
Just a bad hill. That's a tough one, especially if it's wet.
Back to the budget.
What are we doing there?
Yeah, uh, grants. Which is page twenty nine thirty one. And so. Where's that, my, page twenty nine, you know, your capital, go kill. It's in the, at the end of the budget. Yes, it's up to page twenty nine thirty one.
The beavers didn't ask permission. They should.
New services of two grand, volunteer fire department fourteen eight fifty, wasn't it more? And did we do something there?
Well, there's capital too, this is just obviously.
Yeah, I know that, but are we going to take care of?
Um, we can, we do set with, um. Doing mow, by five weeks. Yeah.
Well, we hiring two guys.
Well, we're gonna just do it, they had in their budget five thousand dollars for subcontracting, lawn care. Conservation and agriculture.
Actually, that value's over. You're right, that should be. That's three thousand, is not enough.
No, because the rest will be added to the operating budget, so it's money going to friends of Mono Pond.
Oh, you're right.
A thousand to that, whatever that trail.
Friends of Mono Pond, two thousand?
That's what the request is.
And that's for, you have Tom here, but that's for the fees and the insurance to create the, um.
That was by last week, this is for next year.
But next year, I'm going, right, insurance, accounting, website, all that stuff.
Stage of somebody, a reporter.
Yes.
So two thousand and then one thousand for what?
Website, trail, people.
Oh, oh, just a few things with conservation, conservation and ag, is that what we're talking about? Yeah, alright, so conservation and ag. There's some signs that, so. Other towns have put up signs to write to Farnetown, which Columbia is, and we don't have that yet. We have a welcome to Columbia and Alliance Club. So there's some thought about putting those kind of signs around, which would be a part of the conservation and ag. Then as we move forward with work on the Pine Street Lot, putting up a kiosk and any signage we need there. And then these signs we have on the existing dirt roads that are in Wellswood as trail, you know, markers, that kind of stuff. There's a lot of different places we could spend that money.
Is there a backhoe for the Pine Street lot?
Do.
Bringing up three, three, uh, pieces of equipment, two dump trucks and a gozer.
Open that road right up.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
No, that's, um, that got pulled, but now we still need a thousand this year for the.
Oh, here, here, here's the other thing. So this is, this is, we're still under budget, but other budgetary things, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then, so we'll decide, Sax, if you little library and the Federation of Lakes, okay, so. Here's another budgetary item that may be in the works, we've been asked by Kona. I thought about that, great, we've been asked by Kona to have a program to provide shoveling and snow removal plowing. For those people who can no longer physically do it. Right?
Yes.
Or afford it.
Afford it or physically incapable of shoveling the driveway or the walkways. And Lions have donated a thousand dollars to that fund already.
So. Kona is. Responsible for this, or what?
It was their vision, and they, they took three hundred dollars that we gave them to do, they do some, a project every year. So they started this project with three hundred. Kona members also have husbands in the Lions, so. They thought it was a great idea to join with Kona, and now we have thirteen hundred dollars in the budget called, um, a senior assistance.
Senior community assistance.
Senior community assistance. And one focus they wanted was snow removal if wheels on. Food on, wheels on, wheels, wheels on wheels, needs to drop off food to your house, or you need to get your driveway available so the. Town bank can get in there, take you to a doctor's appointment. Uh, but this year, this is our first announcement, so it wasn't actually a huge issue yet. But it, it raised a whole lot of other issues, I've already been in touch with Kerma to make sure. Anybody that we contract with to provide this service that we would fund, signs a. Contract that holds us harmless, we be, we need to be named in the policies and ensure. We're paying for this, so it gets complicated real fast to do something that was done by volunteers in the past.
Oh, and that's what I was gonna count, when we have.
We have some volunteers who have.
Community service kind of stuff from.
What happened, neighborhood kids that do it. That's funny, Chris. So, so did I, nobody does anything anymore, okay? I thought about the scouts.
They really, um, what happened to A H M, used to provide, or they still do, they have a service where teenagers get paid to do. Help for seniors in their household, but they will not let them do shuttling, I guess due to liability. They can't run machinery, equipment, snow blowers, or anything like that. I guess, I don't know why they can't run shovel. They ran a shovel accident.
Or Carter's, what I was told.
This was over an hour.
Come back into it. Um, yeah, I know. I, I, I'll be honest with you, I can see this becoming a, a, a town. Run program, and I don't want, you know, we're gonna be hiring the, the people who do the. Mowing in the, uh, in the summertime, we're gonna be having them on a retainer for, I, I, I didn't want.
Kona, Lions should reach out to the scouts and see.
Or then the Leos.
The scouts and Leos, those days are done where they, they, they like to do projects, but they don't like.
To actually help anybody.
You can't get them to actually.
What about even the school? I thought students have to do creative services now. They can get credit through school.
I don't know, it seems to be different these days.
How about neighbors helping neighbors?
Well, that's how it's done in my neighborhood, we've always helped the elderly people in my neighborhood by whoever had a snow blower, got down to the driveway for a shot down there and did. Two elderly neighbors.
Right.
They passed, so now. My neighbor helps me shovel. Now I'm getting help.
You're the elderly. I know the courts have a community ser- uh, community service program as well.
So these older ones are up for a little while, Larry.
So, so you're gonna be able to shovel with a shovel.
So I, I'll be with the Boy Scouts Thursday night, I can ask a question. As to how much interest, how many people, how many locations are you looking?
I just want to talk about handful. We don't, we're not positive. We don't know.
Yeah.
That's the other issue, okay? I don't know how you qualify for it, or. I don't know how many numbers of households we have, my question was, where are they going anyway? If it's not a doctor's appointment, I mean, honestly.
So Kona wanted to do a big release, launch it through our newsletter, Facebook, that we now have a fund and can help you reach out to the town. But we've held off on that, and I've told Kona. And Stephen requested that this would be discussed in, or slightly first before.
It is kind of confidential thing.
Normally with these kind of, they're not advertised, and it comes through social services approved by Ben and myself, or. Steven, and it's usually one-offs, one oil tank, hundred gallons, get you through the winter. And we have funds for emergency food, emergency fuel.
Right.
Uh, but we were concerned with setting up a whole social program.
How many people utilize that summer program to help people with yard work, you know?
I don't know, because A H M runs that.
Because it may be the same numbers.
You, you get a hold of Canadian, ask her, does she, does she?
I don't think they work with A H M at all.
Um, no, but Zegga just notified me that he'd like her to be on the J R B. And so it's a discussion, I need to reach out to A H M.
I think that's a great idea. It would get, get, help her have a connection with A H M.
Right.
In addition to other stuff.
So we need more information on this program, and I have a. We're working on a contract with Kerma right now, I'll get you a contract. I'll try to see how we can keep it controlled. And we don't have a lot of funds, and you can pull through thirteen hundred.
More than one, but we have to have a limit of what we're gonna pay and all that kind of stuff.
And what is the criteria that you're on that list?
Well, and I didn't get a clear answer on the criteria, except they felt the energy. Assistance criteria, twenty-five thousand in income was too low. But income is not the only guy we have, what is there social security?
Usually it's the, usually it's like, or kind of like a referral in need, like, you know.
What do you mean? Sorry, they think that you have, if you make over twenty-five thousand, you should buy your own oil.
No, energy assistance is for electricity, isn't it?
For both.
Is electricity on you?
I would think it would be, yeah.
There's energy and, and which is electricity and others, you know, fuel, but I think there's criteria, but usually we, we've been, um, the honor system is just basically. If we got a referral, if this, uh, resident really in need of something, um, that, you know, we basically. Try to get a little information and then we go forward with it and take care of, but it's all kind of kept, um, not like, here, sign up, we want. You know, it's more like a referral, we try to keep it very confidential, because, you know, these people are usually not. One to ask for help, so. So this program should be similar to that, where somebody sees there's somebody in need, like something's going in the house, and they can't get their. It's an elderly person, they, they know they have to go out right, because they need shoveling, then, or. Then they should be referred, and we try to make arrangements to get somebody there, but it should be a free fall, like, I think they have to go out with the food van. It turned into a free fall, anybody wanted food, they can go get food, but they finally had a limit and say, no, it's not happening that way, so. You do have to set parameters up, but it can't be just like, here, the list of seniors and all paperwork, there has to be a valid need. So. So discussion for later.
Yeah, I'll put that on the agenda for March seventh. Is this something that we've ever seen in, in another community? What's that though? Something we've ever seen in another community?
I'm sure they.
The shoveling, plowing?
Yeah.
I have to call their social services department in other towns to find out what they have and if they're parameters.
The liability, I just, I mean, it's, it's one thing for assistance, but now I have to talk in something that.
In three years, we'll be voting to buy an F-two-fifty pickup with a fly line to do the, the driveways in town. And then, you know, he'll, it'll have to be two or three people, because two people will get out of the truck to do the sidewalk. While the other one plows.
This morning, I drove.
We ain't doing it.
I drove by Colchester.
Liability is an aspect here, or two. Snow, you don't do it right.
You can't just plow someone's driveway without stinking it and knowing where to put the snow.
I'm just putting, you, you leave, you leave, you don't do it right, or you don't treat it properly, you get ice, or you get somebody concerned, they're gonna be selling, they gotta say.
So, so when they called me about Kona giving the money, I said, I would not limit it to just snow plowing, I asked them, that's why I put the name as is, so that. If there's a need throughout the year, a senior needs something, it's more of a general thing, not focusing out, and I thought that was, yeah, that's a better idea, so. Now it's turned back to the snow plowing thing, I don't, so, I don't know why that changed, but understand I have it, it was more to help. Throughout the year, something a senior needs, whether it's, you know, something happened at the home, any assistance, or whatever's anything. You know, so much of the rest of residents, so it would be more focused towards seniors, but I don't know why that changed again, so.
So something to think about. It's out there, I'm just telling you, I am not, at the, at the present time, without any structure, I am not in favor of moving forward in any way, shape, or form. Until they bring it in, we can discuss it. Okay, that's my saying, so, I have one other thing I'm gonna, last week, two weeks ago. There was a meeting about the, uh, the school and their air quality and stuff. I finally received the results of the tests that they did in the last couple of years. And I, I will tell you, it's, it's not quite that was laid out there, um, this one is from September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two. Forest Porter mold inspection form, A-Win, room one fifty-four, mold, no. One fifty-six, no, one fifty-five, no, one fifty-two, no, every room, no mold whatsoever, so. When, when, when the question, and I, and I have spoken to specific parties, that we are to be more informed. When we answer questions, if we don't know the true answer, say, I don't know, I'll have to get it for you. But the bottom line is some information went out that I was concerned about, and the truth of it is, it wasn't exactly accurate. Um, it was, it was laid out there of concern, but the good news is, the latest air statistic or air quality we did. There was no mold found in the school, so that's a good thing. And anybody can look at these if you want, but. We have a, we have a moisture problem over there, so the good news is the referendum passed, because we can now get to work on finding a true solution. So.
So the mold goes away, comes back, and then, so that.
It's, it's a moisture thing, so.
The moisture thing's bad.
Okay, and we don't have, uh. A formal, any last discussion from your solution?
I had.
But anybody can circle through.
Question, um, and I guess this is probably a general question, the professional and technical line in all of the various departments, um. I mean, overall, I mean, I did the rough math, I mean, it's, seems like the professional technicals got a. Ten percent overall, give or take. Is that? And I know there is, you, you've got everything from the, uh, state trooper who falls in that to other departments, is a lot of that, um, like. Training and stuff as well, that's now on the department.
No, professional tech is usually like, um. Like finances to pay tax fees, it's their software fees, every year, they're going up. So down in Tom Clark is probably the micro teaching and, um, whatever the, none of the.
No, this is.
No, it's, it's gone up, our service security, we're waiting for that policy, that's insurance, um.
So all the services we pay for.
So separate from contract expenses, some of those contract services.
Yeah. So contract services, some of that, I mean, there's an intermix of those, depending on how the, each department does it, but everything is going up, all their contracts, they go out, they're close to everything, this is a good one, like.
Seem to be the one that really jumped up on.
Everything's going up, everything's gone up. And there's no more buying software, it's all subscriptions.
Yeah, because then they can, you worry, pay lease fees and they make more money.
Keep it in the cloud.
Leases for what?
Anybody else? Uh, is there anybody we want to bring back? You have questions, and any departments that need to get them back in here? Take a look at it, yeah, call me, yeah, let us know, we'll bring them back in here. All right. This time then, no, no concerns or questions, we're ready to go, make the motion to adjourn, all those in favor. Nine oh six.